All right, it is six o'clock and I'm going to call this city council meeting to order. Today is March 8th, 2023, 6:00 PM. Will you please rise with me to say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I'm going along, we'll go through roll call. Councilman Owen.
Yeah.
Councilman McGoffin.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilman Allen.
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca.
Present.
All right, thank you. Moving to item number D, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, second by Councilman Lavaca, to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Item E, no, nothing on the consent agenda tonight. I think that's the first in the six years that I've been sitting here as mayor, so that's pretty cool. Next, we have introduction of special guests, and we have two tonight. And the first is Roger Shutey.
Chuckie.
Okay, I knew I would say it incorrectly.
Serena Arnam is going to be joining me.
Hello Serena, all right. Well, they are going to be here tonight to talk about the outreach that they're doing for the YMCA here in Sejowoli, so Roger, very glad to have you come.
Well, thank you for having us.
Yeah.
It's a pleasure to be here and let you know what's going on over at the rec center. We have a slideshow up. Cool. So yeah, well, thank you for having us here. My name is Roger Chuckie, I'm the outreach manager for the Skagit YMCA. I oversee a street outreach services grant to provide outreach services to homeless youth ages 12 to 24. I also oversee operations at the Sejowoli Rec Center and have been starting it back up this winter. And this is Serena.
Hello.
Hi Serena.
I'm the food service and event programming site supervisor. So I make sure that whatever events or programs that we have come into the rec center are fulfilling for the youth and educational. And then also, we serve food every day to youth that are in need or hungry. So we, I also oversee that as well.
Serena's been huge in what we're doing, so I wanted to make sure that you all see her face. And yeah, she's going to tell you a bit about what's going on. So what we want to do today is just kind of give you an overview of what has happened since this summer. I believe most of you all probably know about the pilot program that happened this summer. If you don't, there was a pilot program for the rec center between, thanks to y'all, and the Rotary. Over the course of the summer, yeah, we saw some really cool things that led us to here. So I want to go over the 2022 pilot program. We'll talk about the takeaways of that pilot program, the implementation of the program, what we're existing in now, and what we're learning from that, and then what we're hoping to do next. You can go to the next slide. I want to highlight though why a teen drop-in center, why it's important for folks who are here. Well, there's lots of reasons why space like this is important, as many of us can probably come up with. The biggest probably being holding relationships, at least to me. We all recognize the importance and significance of teens developing safe, healthy, and consistent, steady relationships with supportive adults. We're seeing it in our community that youth are showing up pretty much everywhere that they can. Our teens are all over the place. The library is overcrowded right now with teens as well. We're seeing 25 to 30 youth a day, daily, right now at the rec center. They start looking for a place to be. Also, I wanted to highlight the COVID, the county COVID recovery plan and the community health assessment, which stated that one of our biggest weaknesses in our county is the overwhelming need for behavioral health support, which we're hoping to help out with at the rec center. You can go to the next slide. So this summer, we did a pilot program. We provided the low barrier, safe, and supportive space for youth ages 12 to 17 to engage in activities and socialize with their peers. We were open Monday through Friday from 12 to 6:00. There was free food provided and a variety of activities available for youth to participate in, including air hockey, video games, arts and crafts, field trips out into the community. We had a huge success in the eight weeks that we were open. There ended up being 89 youth that registered for the program and 65 that participated over the course of those eight weeks. And there was minimal marketing about it. It was mostly done word of mouth. And so youth just kept inviting their friends and they kept coming, they kept coming. Also, the Stop, Drop, and Run program had 37 participants in it. This is a program for youth to engage in running, like cross-country running. Registration was free and the YMCA provided running shoes, socks, shorts, shirts, you know, glide stick, cool things for them to engage in and get into the act of running. You can go to the next slide, please. What we learned from this summer was that youth do need supportive spaces to exist, socialize, and ultimately belong. We learned that young people trusted and enjoyed the program enough to recruit their friends. And we learned that staff need to be trained more. We need to be trained more to, to an additional degree in order to best support the youth and the behavioral challenges that we're seeing, which we're seeing all the time. But, so what we've done now is we kind of went through a process of reevaluating and we revamped. They hired me on in October and I spent the first couple of months kind of planning for this as well as to take over the street outreach grant. And we reopened on December 19th. We've continued to, with, we reopened with the goal in mind of continuing to ask for youth voice to be a central component of the space. So part of our program is very much, I mean, it's a youth-centered program. We ask the youth what they want, we ask the youth what they need, we ask the youth how they can use support. We have the youth take responsibility for the space. We have them come up with, you know, some of their own expectations and rules, which we'll see here in a second. And we also upped the requirements for staff, new staff, to be 21 years or older. And also, the training requirements now mirror our staff at the Oasis Teen Shelter. So we're training staff in how to, you know, better support vulnerable youth and especially with mental health. And so I'm going to pass it off to Serena. She's going to tell you a bit about what we have seen since we've reopened, which has been pretty cool.
Hello. So the response since we opened at winter break has been pretty remarkable. It was also expected based on the summer program. We've had a lot of repeat youth, a lot of parents telling their kids that it's reopened and so they're coming back, telling their friends, all their friends are coming. And now we have over 180 youth showing up. Like Roger mentioned, we get about 25 to 30 daily. And a lot of them are hungry, a lot of them are in need of basic hygiene, clothes, a friend, an adult to talk to, something. This has accumulated to 1,400 hours of time spent in our space. And that's just since the beginning of winter break. So that's about 75 days. Part of the program that I run is the meal every evening. I make sure there's a hot meal provided that is healthy. We have a veggie tray out, we have snacks. And if they ate their dinner tonight, they got ice cream right before I left. I do have expectations, it's not just a free-for-all. And also, we have served over 350 meals since December, which is outstanding. I didn't even know that that was the case until I got the statistics recently. Also, we have had a lot of youth participation in community meetings, or community meetings and interior design meetings. We have the food bank and clothing bank in the back room so that they can take what they need. They ask all the time for items. With the programming that I offer, it's educational, it is fun, and I ask them what they want. We have a get-to-know-you form when they first show up and it lists off about 50 activities that I would think that youth would like and then they check them off and then I find ways to bring those activities into the programming. I also partner with the high schools. I'm a parasub in the school district as well. And I have worked with both of the high schools to make sure that our events and programming is getting out into the community to the youth. I've also developed a texting system so I can text the youth so that they can also find out what's going on. And then I've also partnered with the library to start mixing our programming together. So the staff over at the library is very excited to start kind of amping up and doing things together. Next slide, please. As you can see, we've come up with expectations on the left and then the youth have come up with their own community expectations on the right. We had them set themselves when we did our community meeting a week or so ago.
Couple of weeks now.
And they're doing a really good job. They hold each other accountable, they don't run most of the time, they have inside voices, and they clean the putt for themselves, which is really important. So they have really good rules and expectations set for themselves. And we want to make sure that they're holding each other accountable, so we've also set the expectation that, you know, if you see someone doing something, be a friend and talk to them about it. Ask if they need help, something like that. And this has created a really big sense of community. We get a lot of repeat youth every day, so they're becoming a nice group of youth in our community. Next slide, please. So youth also on that get-to-know-you form have a section that asks what they need. Not just what they want to see, but what they actually need. And it's about 30 things that they can check off that are real needs, like housing, clothing, food, mental health support. And as you can see here, the support services, number one is mental health support. We are starting to build these relationships with these youth in our community and they are coming to us more and more with trust, talking to us about really hard stuff. I get at least once a day, youth coming to me, talking to me about how they feel and what they need and how hard it is in their life with whatever they're going through. So definitely, mental health is huge. And then obviously, homework help, COVID kind of did number on all our youth. So, you know, we want to make sure that we're offering that. I do academic support every week, at least once a day, or excuse me, once a week on one of the days. And then also, you know, number three, they want to feel included. So inclusivity is really important in our space and we want to make sure everybody's included, no matter who they are, what they look like, or what they feel. So we want to make sure that that is a big support as well. And then surprisingly, when I did my activity interest sheet, everybody wants to learn to cook and that's literally one of my passions. So I'm super excited about that. And they like to be creative with music and art as well, or they want to be creative with music and art. We definitely want to make sure that we're giving them a lot of opportunities along with what the ice cream provides. You want to talk to this one?
Yeah, we can do the next slide. Yeah, so moving forward now, there are a variety of things that are emerging and coming up. You know, I've kind of approached this program as let's, let's see what happens and let's experiment and, you know, kind of run tests and see what's showing up and then reevaluate and say, okay, what holes do we need to fill, what do we need to plug in? And it's, we're seeing a lot of things anyways. Really, the biggest one right now that Serena and I started identifying is finding like a consistent place to cook, a consistent kitchen to be in, so we might be able to start doing some cooking classes. And also so we can do more meal prep because sometimes we're doing prep and like during, during our open hours, which wasn't initially anticipated because of our limited kitchen space. So we want to start up a volunteer program. We need more staff in there. Right now, like, you know, we were just talking about on the way here, there's lots of youth that come up to us and really want attention. They need that one-on-one attention. And, you know, we don't have capacity to give everyone one-on-one attention. We have capacity to hold a container in a space so to make sure that they're safe and people are being respectful and following guidelines. But we don't have the capacity as a staff currently to have a ton of one-on-one time with youth, especially when it's getting really packed and there's large gaps in like maturity levels between the ages, you know, all the way from 12 to 17, because we see all of it. We have a big project we want to do in one of the rooms in the library, or in the old library at the rec center now. Just turned it into a universe room, like completely like you're in outer space. And so we just had a interior design meeting about that and we found some folks who are willing to help with the cost of what that would take. And we're really excited about that. That's a big thing the youth are engaged with in designing and they're actually taking a role in coming up with the budget of what it would look like, which is pretty cool. We have kind of task force groups that are helping out with different elements of that space. We need to have a better food bank and clothing pantry. We have one that exists and, you know, there's clothes back there and a clothing rack and stuff, but, and we have some food that's back there, but, you know, we want it to be robust and like almost like be like a thrift shop back there where youth can come in and take what they need. And we want to open on Saturdays pretty soon. So right now, we're just open Monday through Friday from 2:30 to 6:30. And what we're looking to do is start opening on weekends. And we've surveyed the youth and they've all said that Saturdays would be the day that they could most use it. So that's what we're working towards. Yeah, it just is about getting staff really and having, and me having a little more time to organize it. We're slowly, slowly getting there, but yeah.
Really only 75 days in, so you're starting to identify where your strengths and where the holes are at. As they say, cracks in the sidewalk kind of thing.
Yeah.
I just have a quick question. I don't know if you've had opportunity to either partner with Helping Hands Food Bank as far as the food. And then I know Seroptimus has the Walnut Tree. I don't know if they would have some clothing that they might be willing to donate to the program?
Right. I did forget to bring up that I actually do partner with the Helping Hands Food Bank.
Yeah, okay.
Roger made the connection and I went in there and talked to staff. So every week I go in and get food for the week and then any gaps we fill in during the live. But I do go to the Helping Hands and have a relationship with them and make sure that we get lots of healthy food, say tons of produce for the youth to have. So yes, we do do that.
They're a great organization. So questions, do you have any questions? Do you want to?
I was just going to thank you for making a difference in our little princes' lives because of what you do. You give them a space and thank you for that.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate the whole Y organization, but especially the teen center. And so last year when it opened up, I actually spent quite a bit of time there. And I talked with the youth and kind of saw what they were wanting. And like you said, some of the big things they were talking about was mentorship or tutoring programs. And tutoring came up, so we actually connected them with this senior center who were, who I said, well, there's people here who have the ability to tutor and you guys want tutoring, have you considered this? So they were, they thought that was a great idea and we're actually excited about it. And then they had mentioned, you know, having some sort of security and safety. They definitely wanted that and so that was something that was coming up from the school. Homework, counseling, that was something that they talked about. I didn't, in all the conversations I had with them, LGBTQT never came up. So I'm not sure if that's a program that is new or something like that, or if we want to isolate that, or if it's even necessary in there, more than just counseling or just being a youth center for people. That's always, when I was a youth, we just treated everybody with kindness and respect equally. And we didn't point out people's differences or anything. I think they could do that. Funding, like raising up general funds or creating like something where they partner with the businesses to clean up downtown, clean up the litter or, you know, raise different funds. And then having a committee of their own to figure out how do they spend that? And then they can buy new Xboxes or plan on trips or, you know, bring in a concert down at the park, whatever they want to do, but let them as a committee kind of do that. And they all were very excited about that. And they have a lot of great ideas and I really enjoyed my time with them. They're a great bunch of kids and it was growing big. The only thing that I saw that was challenging was it ended abruptly last year. And when you're developing relationships with the youth, or anybody really, and you end that relationship abruptly, it's difficult. And so I'm definitely glad to see it open and I'm definitely glad to see somebody in there full-time. And if you guys do have to come to a position to close, I would just recommend more notice and then that kind of councilor mentorship time before you do. And thank you for everything you guys are doing.
Thank you for coming in and meeting with the youth, yeah.
Yeah. And we do have plans for volunteers cleaning up and helping.
I think businesses even would pay a small bit every, some pay a small bit every month and you can have a monthly consistent donate. If you guys do this, you'll get this monthly and whatnot. But yeah, they're great, they are great. Thank you so much.
I, yeah, I think that what you're doing is absolutely amazing. I didn't find it ending abruptly. We all knew that it was there for a period of time and then you were going to change up the program, so. And the staffing, you knew what you would need and so we thank you for that. I do have a question for you. You said, especially you Serena, you were talking about that there's some hard conversations that you actually have with some of the youth. I'm curious, do you partner with or do you have other services that you can refer them to? How do you, how do you go about doing that?
So we have, Roger especially, I think he might be able to speak to this a little more. You know, they come to me, I've taken on this like mom role because I'm a teacher, I'm a mother. They trust me, a lot of the girls come to me, they're a woman. And so if I definitely let them know that if there's any really hard stuff or unsafe stuff, I have to move on to the resources that the community and the county has and state. But as far as what we have available with resources, Roger partners with a lot of different services that are available so that the youth make sure, we make sure that the youth get what they need. So do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I know of folks, there's not, we don't have, you know, the programs that exist in this area that to like really fulfill the need, as far as I've seen so far.
That's where you're such a big help.
Right.
It's really, I mean, you're feeling, right.
You know, all of our staff go through like a mental health first aid course. So we have everyone trained on how to, that's quite literally, you know, first aid, right? But we can refer people to see a counselor or we can, we can encourage youth to be meeting with the counselor that they already have or continue to, you know, talk with them about why it is they might have a bad relationship with this person who's actually there to help them or not. But, you know, counselors at schools are overwhelmed over work, you know.
What was the statistic? I think there's two psychiatrists in Noma County.
Yeah, I know. And people are retiring from that.
And people are retiring. We need more young folks who are psychiatrists.
Yeah. And counselors.
Long road for a psychiatrist.
Um, well, I just want to end by saying this. So when, when in meeting with Dean, one of the things that we actually understood and knew was that there would be children, young adults, who would come in, whose lives would be impacted and changed. And, and that comes from people like you who are spending your time and your energy and your compassion, taking the training that you have and putting it towards the youth. And I think it's amazing, what we do today, you know, echoes through eternity. And so what you're putting forth with the youth today, that's going to last for, you know, a millennium. It's just because it just perpetuates. So I cannot thank you enough for your time, for your energy, for what you're doing. You're our heroes and really thank you for stepping up and taking the call because it is a hard job. It's a very hard job.
Thank you.
Thanks for helping make this happen, yeah.
All right. Oh, go ahead Brendan, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to also say thank you because there was a lot of discussion about, you know, what to do with this building. And it's hard to know what the community needs before, you know, we build it and people come. So it's, I'm really grateful to hear that it's being used and it's, you know, you guys are filling a need in the community and.
I grew up in Sejowoli and there was nothing like this when I was a kid. So it's nice to help give impact to the community.
Yeah.
We appreciate it. I had one follow-on question from the mayors. And when you're having these difficult conversations with some of the kids, are any of the troubles that they're having, you know, community-based, you know, drivers from the community that, you know, maybe we can help with? Or is it mostly individual or family issues?
It's probably family and peer the most. I don't think youth feel very heard. That's kind of what I'm hearing is they're not getting attention, everybody's pulled in different directions. There's a lot of, just things when they were kids, you know? Peer-on-peer stuff and then family issues if they have that kind of stuff. Feeling different or alone, it's kind of a, kind of a resounding issue.
Yeah, with suicide up at an exponential rate, what you're doing is phenomenal. Thank you again, really appreciate it. Thank you for coming before the council and sharing what's happened so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, appreciate y'all.
Thank you, you too. All right. And thank you Dean. So we have Cindy in the back there, we have Dean Snyder and he is the director of the YMCA and does an amazing job over there. Thank you Dean. All right, next on our agenda, we have Cindy Verge from the Tulip Festival. She's going to be presenting a poster to the city of Sejowoli. She does this every year and.
Let's start out with it, just setting up.
Perfect.
Before I tell you about it.
Perfect.
Oh, purse.
Oh, that's awesome.
Cindy and I were saying it screams happiness.
So it's my pleasure to come here every year and give the city of Sejowoli a poster. We keep working to get more and more things with the Tulip Festival happening in the eastern part of our county. We tell folks, come see the tulips and then go find your favorite gem, whether that's Woodfest in Sejowoli or maybe going up to Concrete, finding a favorite restaurant that you might like to see. So it's real important to us to have a countywide presence and to have things going on throughout all of our cities. And that's a goal sometimes we fall short of. It's been tough coming back from COVID because a lot of things just quit happening and groups move on or individuals move on and all of a sudden, you're recreating some of those events and activities. So it's really great to see like Woodfest go on and then up in Concrete, we've added a couple of activities as well. And so this year, we've got our poster. A wonderful young woman named Carrie Klavendettcher painted this and it is a painting. And it is photorealistic work. Carrie has a very, very interesting background. She played on a nationally ranked youth volleyball team, went to Yale University, graduated from Yale with a degree in physics, spent time as an intern with NASA and this little company called Microsoft. And then she decided she was going to become an artist. And so you don't hear that kind of left brain, right brain, and they're both working. So when Carrie undertook this project, she wanted to make sure it was scientifically accurate as well. And so you'll see the Savannah Sparrow and the Savannah Sparrow perches all the time on tulips. And it, you hear it singing, you hear it flitting all around the fields and to me, it just says spring. And it's bright and cheery and we're really looking forward to no COVID, no restrictions, being able to welcome people here to our area and to just bring back spring in the Skagit Valley to a festival. And I have left brochures, there's also brochures on the back and so please look at those. You'll notice a few differences. We've moved the map right inside because this year we have four tulip growers. Another venture started and they planted tulips last fall and it's going to be real exciting to see what those, those fields and flowers look like. We've also added an electronic online passport program. And we have over 70 events and businesses participating, encouraging again, people to go out and about. And you earn prizes, so you can get a sticker, you can enter a prize to win a drawing. And we even have a grand prize of an overnight stay at a local hotel and a dinner at a restaurant. And so we're really excited to do that and we're working with Skagit Tourism Bureau to make. to make that one happen. And we've also engaged a media firm out of Bellingham called Swol Media. And they're working to help us expand our reach via social media. And we felt like that this is a real important year to do that because, um, you know, from a shutdown in 2020 and kind of sputtering the last two years, we want to come out real strong and make sure we have lots of folks. So that's it. Any questions I could answer about the Tulip Festival, the poster, what we're doing?
Any questions for Cindy? No? So again, I just thank you for making the trip here to Cedar Woolley, bestowed upon us. We have these hanging up all around the building. We absolutely love them. I have a couple in my office. Yeah, when, actually, finance gets first crack at them. And when they replace them, I take them into my office. So, yeah. So try to make the most of it.
We're journeying down to Olympia and that's one of the fun things is to make sure that all of our, uh, Skagit County representatives and senators have a poster to be able to hang in their office.
Oh, that's awesome.
Because we have the governor and the secretary of state.
That's awesome.
Because we, we want that representation. And pretty much says spring in Washington State.
Yeah, it does.
Um, could I get a picture?
Yes. Do you want a picture of the whole council? Or Cindy, what, what do you want here?
Um, yes. Could we all come down in front? That'd be great. I'm good, but you guys are going to have to get closer. A little bit closer on the sides. Here we go. A little closer. All right, we gotcha. One, two, three. And I'll take a couple. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You. Let me set this right here so we can enjoy it, all of us. All right. That was a lot of fun. Great way to start the evening to have presentation and actually two presentations. Moving on to city administrative reports. Charlie, good evening.
Yes. Good evening as well, Mayor and Council. Uh, just one question tonight for the council. I talked about it a little bit in my weekly update last Friday. Uh, the city council has an internal, uh, so far, uh, email list that we've, that we use to communicate with all of you. And it occurred to us it might be helpful, um, to provide that to the public to be able to email the entire council all at once. But given that that is council communications with the public, we wanted to check in with you before we made any changes or publicize that email address to see how you felt about that opportunity. Any concerns from council if we were to do that?
No, Madam Mayor. It seems like a good idea because it's a great way for them to get the word out. Usually if it's mailed in, it gets forwarded out, but that might not always be the case or people might not know where to go.
Right. Hearing no concerns, we'll, we'll make that update to the website. So people can just click on it and email everybody. And that way you all get the same message and then you can filter it as needed or we can help you with that as well. All right. That is all I have this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And you're going to be gone, yes?
Yes, I will be gone for the next council meeting, uh, back on the 27th.
Enjoy. Enjoy your time.
Yes, and gone tomorrow at noon, so.
Thank you Charlie. Councilman Owen?
Uh, thank you Mayor. I have nothing.
All right. Thank you. Councilman McGoffin?
Um, no report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Um, I just wanted to report that we did have a strategic meeting, uh, planning meeting last week. The minutes are posted. Um, we really, it's a new committee really to kind of oversee the strategic plan, um, that the city votes to put in place. That strategic plan is a five-year plan. Um, and so this is a new committee, um, put together to kind of oversee that and make sure that the, that what is going on within the city is putting us closer and closer towards accomplishing those goals and that those goals don't get lost along the way. Um, one of the things that we had discussed as the current committees are, uh, only one-year terms. Um, we discussed the possibility of extending those to two-year terms so that we can actually accomplish things. Um, one-year term meeting, you know, anywhere from two to six times a year is very difficult, um, for anybody to kind of really dig their teeth into something and, and get working on it before it switches hands. So that's something that will come to council for, um, for review. Uh, but that's where it sits and the next meeting will be held after we have our April, um, check-in. So there's that. Um, the other thing in regards to, uh, emails, I think that that's actually a really good suggestion, uh, so that all council members can be, uh, aware to a constituent's, um, concern or, or email. Um, is I actually received an email, um, regarding the recommendation for a crosswalk on Rita and State. Um, and so that was put in place by somebody that, uh, visits the library fairly often. That person, uh, in their email stated that they walk with their children. And at times, uh, you know, the, the possibility, the, the safety concerns that come with the traffic that comes on and, and the blind spots that come in place with it. So I personally went and sat in the area, witnessed it. Um, and quite honestly, it is very difficult. There is visual, uh, issues for drivers as well as people when they're walking through some of it by the over, um, uh, the overflow parking from the apartment complex that's back there. There's overflow parking and businesses as well. So when everything is, when people are home and the businesses are going and there's people in the libraries, that puts, that makes it difficult. Um, so that is a suggestion that was provided and, um, Madam Mayor did respond to that one and, and, um, stated that, that she would pass that recommendation as well into, and, and she did, um, push that forward. But I just, for the record, wanted to, to throw that out there. Um...
Thank you by the way for going and checking that out. And we do, we have a meeting scheduled. We're going to be discussing it.
Perfect. Um, the other thing, I, I've had multiple people let me know that the, the radar that's on Ferry Street is great. Uh, however, we have a couple specific drivers that like to use it to check their own speed. Um, so, so, um, I think they like to clock themselves from the four-way stop moving forward. Um, and it's been going on multiple times, uh, a day according to a couple different people in the neighborhood there. Um, so I just wanted to pass that along. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Burns?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the Planning and Business Development Committee had a roundtable discussion last night with, uh, local business owners so that we could better understand what we could do to help foster business growth in our community. And I think it was a really productive discussion. Councilman Lavaca and Councilman, uh, McGoffin were there, uh, to help us, uh, conduct the meeting. And, uh, we had a number of questions for them to kind of keep us on track. Uh, but we had a really good discussion with them about, uh, what they wanted to see the city do to move forward in a productive way. Um, we have a lot of information that Charlie is going to compile, uh, for the rest of you. Hopefully we'll have in the next packet, possibly the one after that, depending on how quickly he got through that before his vacation. A couple of things that stuck in my mind were improving infrastructure a little bit more quickly, trying to get our roads developed, uh, a little faster to keep up with traffic, not just what's flowing through the city, but the increase from, uh, housing. Uh, also a request for us to, uh, allow a little bit more housing to help decrease cost for the residents, uh, decrease taxes from spreading that burden out. And then also, uh, making it a little bit more equitable chance for people to have upward mobility. Um, one of the things that came up was the idea of an arch at the railroad crossing, which was warmly welcomed by the business owners that we spoke to. They seemed to really like the idea of helping the direct traffic off of 20, um, down Metcalf. It's the most direct route to really get people downtown, uh, business corridor. We also talked to them about the grant program, uh, that you'll be seeing a little bit later tonight. And I thought that had a pretty good reception as well. They all seemed in favor of it, like the idea of fostering, um, volunteers, getting the people to, uh, work with the community, to help, uh, make it a more beautiful place to live and, uh, get people to participate a little bit more. So, uh, hopefully we'll see that moving forward. They seemed excited at that possibility. I'm sure, uh, Councilman Lavaca probably picked up a few different things that I've left out. So I'll be interested to hear, uh, what he gleaned from that conversation as well. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Kesty?
It is council member committee week. We also had a, uh, a, uh, committee meeting for the public safety. Um, Chief McElrath and Chief Wagner were there and we went over legislation updates and, uh, Lovey Ledlift. It was very informational and, um, that's all I have to report.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Allen?
Uh, nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, one thing that came up on, uh, the township and, um, it was the township in Moore Street marked for that improvement we've done, is that when the turn signal goes to yellow and still on green in certain areas on the side that has the school, if there could be better lighting for the lamp post right above that, because as you're turning in the morning or in the evening, um, kids might be coming from or to school along that side. And it's, it's, it gets a little confusing because somebody goes out and they, they almost see that. And I've gone over there and checked that out. And it, it does get a little bit where it would be better lighting, maybe just in those two areas on those two corners. It would be good. The business, uh, planning meeting was awesome. I think it was great to pull out different members from our community that have different businesses and different backgrounds. We had people with 100-year-old businesses and 50-year-old businesses and new businesses that didn't know each other, but it's a great time to get them on the same, in the same room to just hash out ideas or generate ideas. And that's what I really enjoyed about it. Going out to businesses and talking to people one-on-one is always awesome and people got great ideas. But to hear that synergy happening is very exciting. So one of the big takeaways that I got was how much all of them love our community and that's awesome. And then to see how they love cleanliness, they love crisp, they, they really want to see the community, um, very, uh, clean and, and beautiful garden setting. And I thought that was really cool. And some of the comments they made about like fixing up the street lamp post or, or some of the garden settings that get basket hangers and things, uh, was awesome. So I look forward to bringing more of that as we, as we go through that. I think that there's a strategic planning meeting planned sometime this year for the full day cycle we've done. And that would be a great time to have a big roundtable discussion to, to talk about a lot of that and see where our thing is, if, if that is the case. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Um, I just want to make the announcement once again that we are going to have a town hall meeting here on Saturday, March 11th, from 3:00 to 4:30 here in the council chambers. And the town hall meeting will consist of Senator Keith Wagner, Representative Sam Lo, and Representative Carolyn Eslick. And they'll be going over, um, actually what's happening down in Olympia right now and some of the legislation that they are dealing with. So, um, there's a lot of changes that are happening. Some, some good bills that are happening and some bills that are just unbelievable. So, uh, it's a good chance to kind of get their feedback and actually have a chance to put your, put your two cents in as well. So they know exactly where you stand. So that's a Saturday, um, from 3:00 to 4:30. Okay, with that, we are going to move into public comment. And, um, I ask that when you come forward, that you give your name and your address. And, um, you try to keep it to about three minutes. So, do we have any public comment? And I think we do. This might be a good time for those of you who are here for the initiative, the amendment to the ordinance. It'd be a good time for you to actually share what you want to share. So...
Hi. My name's Dottie Chandler and I'm the president of the Lager Rodeo. Um, I live at 10-873 Gardner Road in Burlington. Um, I'm here to support the proposed ordinance of not throwing candy or any other objects during the parade. We are not saying that they can't hand it out. Um, or, you know, we do not want it thrown from the middle of the streets because when they throw it from the middle of the streets from a moving vehicle, they tend to drop candy. And, um, people cannot, or do not, sometimes control their children during this time because they're so excited for everything that's going on. And if, uh, an example of a four-year-old runs out there and the mom can't grab him because maybe she's holding another child, and, uh, somebody that's pulling a float or something like that or driving a truck may not see the kid run out because he could run out in, in between the wheels of the vehicle and run one over. I have given you examples of what has happened in other cities.
This flyer, it was a flyer that was distributed here.
And everything. Um, they can walk along the parade route and hand them or drop it at their feet. We just don't want them throwing it from the moving vehicles or whatever. Um, also there's horses, um, along the parade route. And I know Doug Wood has said there's been issues with kids running out in front of the horses or by the horses. Most of the horses can be controlled, but if you startle a horse, it can kick you or it kicked the kid. It can bolt and knock the rider off. And if the horse bolts, where's he going to go? Into the crowd or down the parade route and stuff. And we just don't, this is all for safety reasons because we don't want any of these incidents that's happened in other cities. I know we have not had it, but I just don't want it happening in ours tomorrow, our event because we have a longstanding running event. It's the oldest one in the state. Um, also, our insurance cost us over $11,000 last year and that was with no carnival. This, and that was for six days for setup and tear-down days and the event. I do not know what the, um, insurance is going to cost this year because we're doing eight days, because we have five days, because it's going to run June 30th, which is a Friday through July 4th, which is Tuesday. Yeah. Um, and in our insurance, that $11,000 does not include our rent and our trailer and other things that's included in there. That was deducted from what? And I know our insurance is going to go up because like everything else, it's all gone up. Um, you know, I just, I see so many kids run out and people say, well, you guys should have it under control. While we have them sign that parade app and it says, do not, you cannot throw from your vehicle. Last year, one of our volunteers stood at the corner of State and Third and was watching people throw candy. She went out and told them they cannot do it. They waited till they got to Metcalf and started throwing it again. They figured out of sight, out of mind. So we've sent letters and told them if they cannot do that, they will be kicked out of the parade next year or whatever. But not everybody that signs that application, sometimes it's the president of the company and then he has one of his other employees drive and does not, you know, convey the thing. So, we're just hoping that you will take this all into consideration and help us make it safer. And like I said, we're not trying to take any rights away of handing out the candy or anything like that. They can do that. They just, we just want them to walk along, not throw it from the middle of a moving vehicle or anything like that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So anybody else have public comment? Okay. Our former police chief. Hello, Mr. Woods?
Hi, Councilman. Uh, Mayor, my name's Doug Wood. Um, and, uh, 338-71 Hamilton Cemetery Road. Dottie asked me to come and talk about the horses. I'm with the Cedar Woolley Riding Club. In Cedar Woolley, we're fortunate because we get to go first every parade, so it's not a big problem. But we ride in Burlington and there are other groups, you know, people, kids darting in and out are always dangerous. Um, so, you know, the more you can do to support what, you know, the walking down the aisle handing, the roadway handing them out, the better. Uh, I called Chief McElrath. You know, I've been dealing with this same problem for 40 years. It's kind of like deja vu. Uh, but, uh, it is very dangerous, especially like the Christmas parade. Oh man. But, um, yeah. And a lot of the, you know, a lot of the onus needs to be on the person who's in charge of the group. You know, in my experience, the worst violators are the class reunions. You know, in my experience, the worst violators are the class reunions because those knuckleheads only ride through once every 10 years and, you know, they're having fun. But, yeah, anything you can do to make it safer because it is quite dangerous, especially on a horse where the kids are coming out or people are running back and forth. And all these horses come from trails. Next thing you know, in a city and it's, you know, they're big scared horses. But, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Norma Cook and I volunteer for the Cedar Woolley Chamber and I have done the parade for the last 10 years, the Christmas Parade. This year, I had the opportunity to be a judge so I could see what was going on. And what happened was they have to fill out the same application. They cannot be throwing candy from the vehicle. When I was sitting there judging and I just had a knee replacement, so I couldn't get up and go chase them down, they were throwing right in front of the judging station, they're throwing candy and these kids were darting out. And we were having trouble with keeping the crowd behind the lines anyhow. And we're just very lucky that no kid got run over. And I could not, I was just floored that they actually were throwing from the floats and from the cars. And then we're not walking them out to the kids. So, my concern is potentially we're going to see someone get seriously hurt. And we just need more volunteers with helping the streets and also some kind of protection from the local police or whatever so we have some power to say, "Don't do that again," and stop it. But I don't know how to do that and hopefully we'll get some help from you guys. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Norma. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Good evening, Mr. Murray.
My name's Philip Murray. I live at 101 West Woodward Street. I want to talk about the alcohol businesses that you plan on putting in for distilling. I'm just curious that if anybody on the city council is planning on putting one in their, on their properties or anything. Because the mayor owns the Woolley Market and that was used as an example at the city planners' meeting. So, I was just really curious if that was going to happen there because...
Not to my knowledge.
...any other buildings in Cedar Woolley that could actually be big enough to accommodate something like that. But now that was brought up, there's no business there. And there's a luncheon cage out there and that's on public right-of-way and there's no business. So, that should be removed and moved back to planners or whatever's there because it's blocking public use. And if nothing's in there by 4th of July, it's a real hazard to get around that thing. And then, let's see, what else? What's the, how does the code enforcement handle people parking alongside on city right-of-way when she comes up and tags your vehicle? Once it's tagged, is there 72 hours after that or is she looking at 72 hours and then tags it and then it's going to be towed right away? It's very unclear on the, how it's written out and stuff. They tagged Dave Button's travel trailer over in front of the power transfer station on Rita Street. And that was a city property and it said posted private property. It was going to be towed by Puget Sound Energy. And so, I thought that was made up by the police and it wasn't. It was my mistake and that. I talked to Puget Sound Energy and he still believes that that was their property. And I showed him where the stakes were and he knows better now. So, you don't get big calls and stuff. But then Mr. Button moved over to Woodward Street and he got tagged there. Maybe his travel trailer was there 72 hours, I don't know. But they tagged his vehicles too, which moved every day, which, so he's threatening to tow his vehicles and that are legally parked on city right-of-way. There's one other thing I wanted to talk about, but I can't really remember what it was at this very minute, but it'll pop up. That's about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right. We will close public comment and we are going to jump right into public hearing. Tonight, we are going to be addressing the proposed amendment for the accessory dwelling unit and regulations, ordinance 2043-23. This is a second read. And just so you are aware, and you should have received this, it should have been at the dais, we did receive in writing, it was submitted by BYK, their comments regarding the ADU code. So, does this need to be read into the record or is this something that we can actually just state? It'll be on our website, correct?
City Attorney Nikki, do you have any opinion on that? I think you're probably okay to just submit it, but I want to be sure.
Nikki, we can't hear you. Can you just maybe nod your head? Can we just submit it? Would that be adequate? Perfect, all right. Thank you, Nikki. All right. Thank you, John. You have the floor.
Good evening, council, mayor. Tonight, we're going to hold a public hearing on requested amendments that the planning commission reviewed for accessory dwelling units, amendments to the accessory dwelling unit regulations to allow spec homes to be built with an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit as an ADU for, sorry, for the acronyms. This was originally brought to us as a request by BYK. They wanted to include accessory dwelling units in new homes that they build. But the way our code reads is only the owner of an, owner of a building, a single-family home can apply for an accessory dwelling unit permit. And so, since they're not the owners of a building that exists, we needed to change our code in order for it to make it possible for spec builders to build a home at the time that it's, you know, the original construction. So, they proposed some simple language. The planning commission reviewed it and kind of crafted it and made it fit better into for how code's written and to meet the city, what they felt would meet the city needs. This was, that ordinance was brought to the council at the last city council meeting. After discussion, the council wanted to see that there were some limits put on the ordinance to make sure that every home in a new subdivision wouldn't be built with an accessory dwelling unit. So, similarly to what we do in our seven zone, we chose 30% as, only 30% of the lots within the overall plat could have an ADU. So, that language was included in this revised draft. And so, the new language reads, "No more than 30% of the original homes in a platted subdivision may be constructed with an ADU. For phased plats, no more than 30% of the original homes in each individual phase may be constructed with an accessory dwelling unit. The section is not meant to limit any platted subdivision from having ADUs on more than 30% of the lots after the original homes are completed and sold. It is only intended to limit the number of ADUs constructed as part of the original subdivision construction." So, that's our way of saying only 30% in each phase of a plat or 30% overall in a plat that doesn't have phases. And that way, you don't end up with, you know, the discussion was, you know, you don't, we weren't sure if we wanted to see like all of the ADUs be built in one corner of a plat or if we wanted it more spread out. So, that was our way to try to have it more spread out instead of having large clusters of ADUs. It seemed like what the council would be more in line with, in line with the council's thoughts. And then, there was also discussion, we wanted to make sure that after the, you know, the entire, all the homes in a plat have been built, that doesn't mean that people who own properties in there down the road can't build an ADU in there. So, that was why we added that language at the end stating that you can still build in an ADU after the plat is complete. That's the presentation I have for this. Hopefully, this, these changes address and reflect what the council discussed at the last meeting. I'm going to step aside and open the floor to public hearing unless any council members have any questions about the specifics before I step away.
Was there a sheet put out?
Yes.
I need that sheet if somebody's collected it. Just so those who signed up, thank you, could have first. So, Phil, it looks like you wanted to make public comment, did you, regarding the ADUs?
Philip Murray, 101 West Woodward Street, Cedar Woolley. I'm really concerned on how many, if it's zoned for 50 homes and you're putting these other homes in there, the traffic's going to be huge. Schools are going to be hit harder and more busing and everything else. Is there a size limit to the lots? Are you, instead of 50 homes on a, in a plan, are you going to make it so it's 40 and there's bigger lots to accommodate these things, you know, and reduce it a little bit that way? Or, because it sounds like after the 30% is built, anybody else can just build one too and then you're back up to 100%. Like you have 100 homes where 50 homes were supposed to be. And that gets concerning with traffic and sidewalks and the cost of everything. Like if you're going to do it on the salt property out there, there's no sidewalks anywhere going down a railroad and the taxpayers are going to be paying for that. And they're going to have, I don't know, 50 kids maybe walking to school there. And it's very dangerous. People are speeding through there all the time. You've heard that before. And it's just a concern how many people you're going to squeeze into an area. A friend of mine just called me tonight from Port of Viarda, he's down there, and he'd heard that down there in Seattle, they're going to make it so that you can put duplexes and fourplexes on any city lot. And I don't know if that's headed in this way too, so it's going to be another concern. Anyway, that's my concerns. I understand why you need it. I don't know if it's going to make cheaper housing for anybody. I mean, I've heard studio apartments are 1,600 now. Nope. That's more than I have coming in a month. You know, you're pricing everybody out of this town with the housing. Building more houses, just more people with money come in and that's what you're getting here and the poor people are leaving, which are citizens from this town. And a lot of them have left already. And you're going to be seeing a lot more of it. The elderly, I've talked to several of them, they're like, "I can't keep up with this." And they're trying to get into government housing, signing up for that. Well, there's three-year waiting lists. I understand why it needs to be done and it's, I don't like seeing just for the profit, somebody profiting from it, building these things. Anyway, that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to give public comment regarding the ADU code? Is there anybody online? Okay, seeing none, I am going to move this to the council. Yes?
May I ask a question from John?
Yeah, I'm opening it up now to the council to ask questions. So, go ahead.
Hey, I would like maybe a rebuttal or an explanation on what Phil had just brought up, on the density and house sizes and lot sizes and that type of thing.
So, this ordinance doesn't have any requirements for minimum lot size or maximum lot size or anything like that associated with an ADU. This was largely, when we first envisioned this, was meant to address state regulations that we were anticipating. Again, the state is looking at requiring ADUs in the state in all jurisdictions. So, we wanted to have something in place that was, that met the needs of Cedar Woolley before the state came up with rules that would say something to the effect of, "You must do it this way." Oftentimes, they, the state regulations will have something and it says, "Unless you have something already in place." So, we wanted to make sure that we had an ordinance that was, made sense for Cedar Woolley in place before something like that happened. And the state is still, legislature still is working on ADU regulations. The latest one has passed, one either the House or the Senate, I can't remember, I think it the House first, and then is moving on. There's also, as Mr. Murray mentioned, there is about allowing duplex, triplex and fourplex type buildings on every city lot. There is legislation in the state legislature right now that is trying to require that. I think that those regulations are going to apply to larger cities at this point and it still has to pass, so we don't know. So, we're really, there's no denying that there is a housing shortage right now. So, the state legislature is doing lots of actions to try to address that housing shortage. And as a city, we're also trying to address the housing shortage. ADUs are one way of addressing the housing shortage. There's no doubt that when you build an ADU, there's costs and it's expensive. However, they're tended, they're supposed to be smaller buildings. We do have regulations that say ADUs are smaller than typical houses with a maximum size of 800 square feet. So, that's intended to keep the costs down and to keep the impacts down. Associated with those lower costs and lower impacts is the idea that ADUs are more affordable. They're secondary housing. They're not homes that people can buy separately from the associated house. They are, they're a rental unit within somebody's property. So, they're intended to fill the void of affordable housing in more of a rental market sense.
And what is that basically doing to lot sizes and property values in the housing around them? By chopping up lots and having, you know, like 20 by 20 backyards and stuff? Is that impacting all the neighbors that have not chosen to buy the ADU?
As far as, well, we don't have any example of what, you know, we've, spec builders never been able to do with one. So, you know, the market's really going to drive that. For example, if 2,600 square foot houses are what's selling, but there also needs to be an ADU along with it in order for people to pencil it out, they're going to need to be on a larger lot. If 1,300 square foot Ramblers are what's selling, you know, they don't take up as much space, so you might be able to get that on a smaller lot. So, the way this ordinance is, it was written is to leave it to the free market to determine what is, what is the market going to bear? Are they, if they build small lots and put an ADU and a single-family house on it, is that going to sell? That's, and if it doesn't, then it doesn't, then it doesn't sell and they've made a mistake and they lose money. So, that's their business to be able to determine whether or not what they, what they're providing is a marketable product. So, largely, we see developers even on, you know, some of the smaller lots, really try to design the lot so that there is usable backspace, backyard space or front yard space for the property owners because they do see that... Because they do see that what sells better are properties with a little bit of yard. So, it's not, in the current market, it's not in the developer's best interest to have no yard associated with it. We do have requirements for maximum lot coverage by buildings on any given lot. So, they'll also have to achieve that in the R. It's not one, not something that we typically see, typically have to worry about much, because with our larger lots in Seidrowooley, we don't see the building footprint meeting or exceeding the maximum lot coverage. I believe it's a maximum lot coverage of 35% in the R5 zone. That's the, you know, five units per acre, rough, or 8,400 square foot lots. And 50% lot coverage in the R7 zone, which is the standard, the standard single-family zone that also allows duplexes. That's, much of the southern part of town is all R7. So, even at 50%, that sounds like a lot. It's, we don't see typical new builds getting up to that point. And developers know of these requirements, so they design their project to stay under that as well. Still not sure if I've answered your question. I could talk all day, though, if you want.
Any other questions?
I'm just really concerned that we're trying to make Seidrowooley what has never been, what it shouldn't be, in my opinion, and what I don't like to see happen. So, anyway, I'm done.
Well, if it dissuades your fears at all, there's ADUs all over town. There's, they were just frequently not permitted or built before a time when we regulated such things. So, lots of garage conversions, lots of back parts of houses converted into second units, all sorts of stuff all throughout town. And sometimes you notice it because it's your neighbor. Sometimes you don't notice it even when it is your neighbor, depending on the size.
Any other questions for John? Go ahead, Mr. Lavaca.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, on this, last, last time we had this council, two weeks ago, when, when I was looking at what it could do for the community as far as having the ADUs versus not having them, I was thinking about rentals for people that don't have the money to buy as well as apartments. And I stand by that and on the concept that I think, I imagine apartments like Trail Road, and I see where that looks like. And I see, like, densified areas that we don't actually experience in our city yet, unless they pass that ruling. And then what it looks like to have kind of apartments broken up in the communities. And I always think apartments broken up in the communities creates more community, so people have more ownership. I think that the ADUs, because your landlord's living on site, whether it be your mother-in-law or brother, or some engineer that's got out of college and going to work or something like that. They're going to have a lot more responsibility versus being in an apartment and kind of partying up that way. Instead, they're landlords right on site. So, I kind of see it as something that's going to be a little bit more valuable to the community and give us the opportunity to also have that bed and breakfast possibility if we do have tournaments or if people do want to have supplemental income as homeowners. I do see where it does raise the rates of homes possibly, and that increases the rate of the community. I agree, my taxes have gone up by double, and I'm just dwelling in my house. And so, it does, does take the risk of taxing people out of their homes. So, we look at that, but then we look at a growing community, and if we're, if we've got ways to address that, that's thoughtful, rather than just building rows of apartments to fill a need if we're pushed by the state to do so or whatnot. I don't know if that'll happen. I know there's R15 areas that are yet to be developed, but it seems like it's a good, good area. And we're filling up. If that's correct, we don't have a lot of area to build. So, it's not like there's, where every home is going to be torn down and built with the ADU in it, I don't think. Does that sound right?
That hasn't, that hasn't been the trend. Like I said, I think we've received six ADU permits since we approved the ADUs a couple of years ago. And just one point of clarification, under our ADU ordinance, short-term rentals are not permitted.
So, they, an ADU would not be able to be a bed and breakfast for somebody if the homeowner lives on site?
Correct, they could not.
And that's through the city ordinance?
Yes, correct.
We had a discussion on, on ways to increase, like the tournament that Sarah Diamond brought to town a couple of times, which was awesome. But it was difficult because people had to stay in Burlington or Mount Vernon. And so, we kind of had a discussion of bed and breakfasts as an option, rather than building big hotels or trying to draw in that kind of business. Might be something to reconsider if that's the case.
Okay, thank you. Councilman McGoffin?
Thank you. I just had one question and then a couple of comments from the discussion we had last night. My question was, we're at 30% now. If that changes or if we go at 30, when they do their initial application, the traffic impact analysis, that's going to take into consideration all the ADUs as well that they would propose building, correct?
That's a little challenging to build into it, because not every builder's going to propose that at the get-go. But we could, I don't know if, with the Public Works Engineering Department can work that into the traffic analysis or not.
Okay. I just thought Phil brought up a good point.
That would be, that would be a newer twist on, on the traffic analysis. Because traffic analysis now are based on the, the ITE models, which is studies of how many cars come and go during specific hours in residential neighborhoods. And so, they, it's based on the typical residential neighborhood throughout the United States. And that's where, that's where that number comes from. So, in theory, if, you know, if other jurisdictions are basing their transportation, if other jurisdictions are allowing ADUs in their neighborhoods, then those, the impacts of ADUs should affect the overall ITE figures. We just have no idea how many other jurisdictions are allowing ADUs, and if that number's truly affecting the, the ITE figures that we use for daily trips, peak hour trips.
That makes it a little bit hard for me to think of going any higher than 30 right now, because if we can't have a good idea of how much more traffic, if we allowed 80%, you know, to have ADUs, there's not a good model to base, like, okay, what's our traffic going to look like? How much do we need to, to plan for? That'd be one of my concerns, because last night, we had a really good discussion with Paul Woodmansey. And this topic did come up, and I thought he brought up some really good points. And, you know, he made me reconsider where I was at on the situation, mostly on, you know, we talk about affordability. And, you know, someone who just graduated from college and has a starter job, they probably can't afford, you know, the 2,000 to 3,000 for an apartment, but maybe they could afford an ADU in Seidrowooley. And so, if we don't want people leaving Seidrowooley because they can't afford it, we need to be creative too with allowing people that want to buy a house, but maybe they also need this extra income to make that mortgage payment. So, those are some of the things that, you know, we talked about last night of, we have to be real that there is a housing crisis. And I totally understand the traffic and, you know, the schools and all these other concerns with over densifying a certain area. But at the end of the day, the shortage in housing is a big factor in why the prices are so high. And if we put a cap at 30, you know, that's just passing the onus on to the owner and to the city to then handle ADUs after the fact. Whereas if we allow 30% or more for the developer, they put all the effort into doing the design, the research. And I would assume that from a planning, or a planning department, it'd be easier to deal with one developer who comes up with a standardized ADU plat versus 50 people after the fact coming with all different sizes and requests. Is that fair to say?
That is absolutely accurate.
Okay. And at the end of the day, we can't limit the owners, once they own the property, from putting in all those requests. So, I'm starting to rethink if that 30% is the best option for the city.
So, to travel a little further down the road, the conversation of traffic, ADUs do pay traffic impact fees. ADUs do pay park impact fees, and they do pay fire impact fees. They pay the same rate of 28 cents per square foot for fire impact fees. ADUs pay a reduced rate for parks and, and transportation. And that's based on the size of the ADU. If it's between 200 square feet and 450 square feet, it pays 30% of a traffic impact fee and 30% of a park impact fee. If it's between 451 feet, square feet, and 800 square feet, then it pays roughly 60 or 61% of a standard traffic impact fee and 60 or 61% of a standard park impact fee. I say park twice, park and traffic. So, they're, you know, they are paying for their impacts.
Madam Mayor, if I may ask another question on that?
I think Joe has a question, if you want to. I'll go to him first.
Well, that's a question, more a statement. I wanted to echo what Councilman Lavaca had said. I completely agree with him on this matter. I think that is a great option for people to have that availability, whether it be for elderly parent, child that's starting to get out of the house but can't afford it, extra income, or even having Airbnb or something of that nature. I would like to see us explore that option, since we don't have many hotel choices in the area. I do believe that Councilman McGoffin made some good points about traffic impacts. So, I too had questioned the 30% cap on it. But without there being a really solid way for us to calculate the traffic impacts, I would have concerns about going above that. I would definitely like to see ways for us to calculate that impact at the beginning, if that's something that should become more of an interest in the future. I'm not necessarily a big fan of restricting what people can do with their property. If somebody wants an accessory dwelling unit for whatever purpose they're choosing, if it's not harmful to their neighbor, then I see no reason to stop them from doing that. And allowing the construction company to do it upfront kind of helps them roll it into that loan that they're going to be getting, allows them to do things more responsibly and a little more simply, especially with your department, Director Coleman, in allowing all of those permits to be obtained at the same time, as opposed to them having to come back with a new construction team and then disturbing their brand-new neighbors within months of maybe purchasing a home and deciding they want to install one right afterwards. It doesn't seem logical to me to force them to make that additional step later on when they are going to have the option to do it if they want to and have the capital. Thank you.
Mr. Lavaca?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So, just in thinking about what Councilman McGofflin said about being able to plan ahead, and I didn't really think about that too. I mean, I would, I would venture to say the opportunity to plan ahead during the first initial phase feasibility studies and, you know, whatever that does for the, the planning department, to see how that impacts traffic, what that looks like for the neighborhood, how does that look like with parking versus building them after the fact and then realizing, well, I built so much parking for my house, and then I didn't have the parking for my ADU. So, that, that would probably be on the developer a bit, but I think the city would be able to weigh in on that. And then with the 30%, it just seems like an illogical number. I mean, 33% would be like one in every three homes, or 50% would be one in every other home. But 30% seems like kind of a weird, weird number. If you had, you know, three homes you were building as a developer, would you be able to put one? Because now it's 33%. You know what I mean? I would, I would venture to go to more of a set number for the home if we were to do smaller areas. If that, if, I don't know if that's something that makes sense. I don't know where we got the 30. I know it was from the...
I apologize. That was thrown around as kind of a one-third number. I think, I think it was probably just me rounding down to a round number of 30 instead of 33 and a third, which would be one-third of, obviously.
Yeah. People, I love building, and I thought about building an ADU for my, for my in-laws, my wife's parents, or her mom, when her, anyways, in time. And so, I thought that would be very cool, but I, I imagine like all these different people building different types of ADUs. And it's almost like if a developer were to do that, and we already know it's coming down the pike, I don't know how many houses we can build in Seidrowooley as far as room left. But I would almost venture to say one in two homes if it was a development, 50%. I don't know if the council would even look at that, or if they are more in line to say if they were to do, building the ADUs at the time after the build.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Kestee?
I was thinking about what Brendan said, and I agree with a lot of it. But you're assuming that potential landlords will be cheaper than the studio apartments, and they're going to want what the market is asking. So, you know, for it to be affordable, I think we have to keep that in mind as well. They're going to want money. Everybody does. So, think about that when we're thinking about this.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Allen?
Okay, one more comment. And, you know, I'm not totally against them, but I've heard Airbnb and a bed and breakfast. And when all this started from the state, it's affordable housing for the residents. And now we're talking about, oh, they can use them for B&Bs or Airbnbs. That is not the intent of the whole bill, I don't think. It's so people can live more affordably, which you know they're not going to. But anyway, that was the intent of the bill, is I understood it.
You're absolutely right. And there are, there are concerns statewide and nationwide that Airbnbs are having a significant impact on the affordability of homes, because it's going towards rentals and not actually people living, you know, they're basically becoming hotels and not places for people to live any longer. So, that was one of the factors that we considered when we did, when the planning commission crafted this original ordinance.
Okay. So, I don't see any more questions. So, there's actually, you have three choices here in front of you, council. You could take action on this matter if you so choose, or you could schedule another time, when we could have discussion regarding this, do some deliberation, or you can postpone and actually ask the staff if you wanted to have them make revisions or do some changes. So, those are kind of your options before you. It sounds, I don't know, it didn't sound like you were all ready to make a decision tonight, given the way you were all over the board. But I'm going to leave that up to you. It's up to you, Councilman McGoffin?
I just wanted to follow up with what Councilman Lavaca said, potentially looking at raising it above 30. I would be amenable to that.
Say again?
I would be amenable to going above 30 for a discussion with the council.
Given, given what you just said about 30%, not having any kind of record to check what that would, what kind of an impact that would be?
Yes, I would like to look into that on top of what it would be like if we bumped it to, say, 50.
Okay. All right, and yes?
I'm not opposed to that. I, I think there does need to be a cap on it. Otherwise, it's no different than somebody putting up a whole bunch of duplexes, right? You've got two, two units on one lot. So, you're looking at a bigger density than what's actually intended for single-family units. That's also going to impact fire and police in the long term. It's going to impact the schools, which, you know, at this point, we're not to address, but it does become a reality because it is hand in hand. It impacts so much more in the long run. And so, you know, and, and I realize that this is brought by BYK, and this information is here with this letter provided to us tonight, but there are other developers as well that could come in. And while it's not their intention to do it, there are other developers that could come in and say, well, it's wide open, and I'm going to throw this all out here, and I'm going to do every single lot. So, I do believe that we do have to have parameters around it, looking at the big picture in that there are other people that could come in in the future, regardless of where where we might be right now. Because our goal up here and our purpose up here is to look down the line, five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road, and not what's right here in front of us today, because the reality is it's not going to affect us. One year from now, it's going to affect the people five, 10, 15, 20 years from now.
So, it sounds like the council would be open then to talking about this at a work session? Is that what you would like to do? Or are you wanting to take a vote? What is your pleasure here?
It seems like it would be nice to see a 50% increase and cap it at 50%. And then that seems like that's something that's stable. If we wanted to do a motion to vote, that would be... If we wanted to do a motion to vote, that would be, I don't know if there's a lot more to discuss on that besides if it's 50 or 33, but it sounded like everybody was in agreement to do it, but it was a matter of how much. And then we saw this, this letter today, which didn't really specify any kind of number, but I'm not sure. I do agree with Sir, or Councilman Diamond, a cap at 50% sounds reasonable.
Councilwoman Kestie?
I liked the, whatever it was to be, the 30.3, whatever it needed to be, that's where I'm at.
Okay. So, do you, yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Burns.
I would be good with raising it to 50% as well, and I'd be open to approving it tonight at 50% if other members were as well.
I'll put a motion forward to push it at 50% if that's, the council's willing to go with that. We'll see.
I'll second that.
Okay, let me get this in writing so we can state it correctly. Okay. You made the motion, Joe? Nick did? Okay. Okay. So, what I have coming before you, and if this is not correct, please let me know, that there is a motion to adopt Ordinance 2043-23. It is an amendment to Chapter 17.100 of the Sidewooly Municipal Code to amend the accessory dwelling unit requirements to allow spec homes to be constructed with an accessory dwelling unit, but with a cap at 50%.
Mayor, if I could just interject with a technicality?
Yes.
The first motion, the motion to amend the ordinance that's presented, and so, on the table is a motion to amend the ordinance presented to reflect a cap of 50% as opposed to 30. And then after that, you would vote on the amended ordinance.
With the 50%, providing it passes?
Yes.
Okay. So, then there would be a first motion that was put out there by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Burns, to amend this amendment to cap 50%, no more than 50% dwelling units within the spec home to be constructed, spec homes to be constructed. So, that would be within, and so, Nikki, I'm wondering if we have to specify within a development? Would this have to be within a development? Because...
Yes.
Yes, okay, within a development. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So, let me go down the line just to make sure. Councilman Lavaca, yes?
Yeah.
Councilman Allen?
No.
All right. Councilwoman Kestie?
No.
All right. Councilman Burns?
Yes.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Yes.
Councilman McGoffin?
Yes.
And Councilman Owen?
No.
Okay. So, motion does pass, four to three. So, having said that, we go back to what was my original motion, and that is to adopt Ordinance 2043-22 with the amendment to cap at 50% in a development. This is to be, this is adopting amendments to Chapter 17.100, the Sidewooly Municipal Code. It will amend accessory dwelling unit requirements to allow spec homes to be constructed with an accessory dwelling unit. All right. So, that is the motion. Is there somebody who would like to make a recommendation to put that forward?
I'll make a motion to move that one forward, Madam Mayor.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay. Again, we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Burns, as I stated previous. All those in favor, I'm going to have you raise your hand. All those in favor signify by raising your hand as yes. Okay, again, four to three, so. So, those opposed? I'll just do that. Okay. Again, it passes four to three. So, there we have it. Anything else? Director Coleman?
No, thank you. That was a very good discussion. I appreciate all the thought put into it, and I'm sure you can understand the amount of work the Planning Commission also went through. You can see there's lots of nuances, and these aren't easy things, and I really appreciate your attention to the detail and hard work on this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, and the first item on unfinished business is amending Chapter 12.44, Special Events, Parades, and Festivities of Sidewooly Municipal Code, Ordinance 2041-23, and this is a second read. So, I don't know. Nikki, do you want to go ahead and take this? I know you did a revision within the amendment.
I sure did. So, after our previous conversation last council meeting, I did make an edit to the proposed ordinance to reflect that a violation of the code, of this provision of the code would be a misdemeanor. I did start it out fairly low. I started it as a class four, which is a $25 infraction, and so, I do understand there may be a need to conversate about whether or not it should be a slightly higher ordinance, sorry, not ordinance, infraction. Otherwise, the ordinance does remain the same. It does still have the amendment that removes the reference to the old Title IX that no longer exists and prohibits the throwing of candy from moving vehicles.
Okay.
I'm happy to take any questions or listen to comments regarding the level of infractions, if you have any.
Okay. So, I just want to point out that on the cover page, down below the background and summary, down on the last paragraph of that section, it does talk about what the class four infraction is. Okay. And so, Councilwoman Kestie, you said you have something you'd like to share.
Okay, so, there was just two things that I had questions with. One was a $25 fine, so, and then also in how it was worded about the candy must be directly handed to event participants, because the verbiage is, you know, you're walking along the side and you're tossing it, or are you literally saying, we have to hand the candy to each person we're handing it out to, and if we don't, it's a $25 fine?
No, because the prohibition is on the throwing of the candy from the moving vehicle, right?
Okay.
So, it's, you're not going to violate the terms of the ordinance if you're not throwing it.
Okay.
From the...
From the vehicle, okay. Councilman Lavaca, or did you have a second question?
No, that's kind of, that's kind of the two. I think it'll be...
Okay, all right. Councilman Lavaca, did you have a question?
I think it's a little bit more of a statement. I do understand where the, where the Lions Club and the Lager Rodeo come in, and we really appreciate everything you guys are doing. I personally don't feel it's a Sydney municipality decision to start putting rulings on stuff like that. We have to be very careful on what coding we put in place, and to make that part of your contract and then to have that enforced within your contract does make sense, and I see the, the purpose of that. But to, to start putting restrictions on, on certain areas if people are making it a criminal code to do this or that because we can is, is kind of sacrificing liberty for safety, and that's how I personally feel. So, I personally cannot vote for it. I think that it's noble, and I think that in the contract you guys write, have that, and I think that's good, but I just don't think it's a city situation.
I don't know that it would be considered a criminal. This is just an infraction, isn't it? I mean, it's nothing, criminal sounds a whole lot harsh.
It is, it is an infraction.
Yeah, yeah, it's just an infraction. Okay. Anyone else? I, I had... Councilman McGoffin?
Oh, I just wanted to add that, you know, when I did my first look at this the last time, I thought it was, the safety risk was people, you know, getting hit in the eye or, you know, getting pegged by candy, but I didn't really understand until I also saw these examples that were passed out, that the other risk is, you know, the four-year-old running out to the middle of the road, getting hit by a truck or a horse. And that does impact my decision, knowing that there's two risks that we're looking at. We're not just looking at getting hit by candy, we're looking at the kids that, you know, I have a wife with a four-year-old and an eight-month-old. If she's holding the eight-month-old, you know, the four-year-old could easily run out if I'm not there. So, I definitely relate to that example, and I appreciate you guys bringing that forward and giving your guys' comment to help us understand, because I do see Councilman Lavaca's point that like, you know, this is a freedom, people, it's the Fourth of July, I've gone to it my whole life, you know, growing up here, and I always loved the candy, but, you know, nobody wants to see a little kid get run over or hit by a horse because someone's got to bag of candy in their car and they're chucking it, you know, or a four-year-old get hit in the eye by it. So, I do think it's a really difficult line for, you know, us as the council to, you know, lower the boom on it, but the fact that they can still walk on the side and, you know, toss the candy out, that's the safest way. I think that's a happy medium. And if you guys need some teeth from us to say that this is a $25 infraction, if that's what you guys need to help, you know, sustain this and keep it safe for everybody, and, you know, I think everyone enjoys the parade, and we can all agree on that. If it requires us to do a little bit of, you know, enforcement to make it safe so that it stays the way it is and it stays the longest in, you know, Washington State, anyway, you have my support, so.
All right, thank you. And I do believe Councilwoman Diamond has a comment?
I actually live on the parade route. I've lived there for 10 years. I personally, candy coming from the street is not going to stop a four-year-old from going out there regardless. I mean, parents need to be responsible for their children as they go out there. It, that sorts of stuff happens. I, I kind of more am in the same belief as Councilman Lavaca in that we are creating a lot of regulations in situations where there doesn't need to be, it should be handled in your contract and in your, in permits, but I don't know that the throwing of, of candy, I mean, you can, you can choose to tell people that they cannot do it, but do we really have the law enforcement to go out and write citations for all of this? You know, is somebody going to be walking along and issuing these? Is this, is this reality? Is this, is this a realistic situation that can actually be followed up with, I guess is my concern? Is that, is that where our resources are going to be used during the parade?
Okay. Councilman Burns?
I do echo Councilman McGoffin's sentiments about safety, and I understand why this is being asked for. I've helped with the parade, and I've seen the blatant disregard to the contract that the people are signing, and I don't know that this is really going to change their mind much either. Hopefully, it would help, at least give some enforcement, especially if someone actually gets hurt, you can say, well, you have violated your contractual agreement with the Lager Rodeo as well as violated law in the city, you are liable for the damages you've caused. I do agree as well with Councilman Diamond that parents are responsible for their kids. I always try to keep track of my, my son and keep him from bolting, and it's tough to do. It's tough to always have your head on a swivel and keep an eye on a kid, and sometimes they do things. And if you're allowing that to continue, where people are giving kids that incentive to run out in the middle of the road and grab a piece of candy because they think it's safe, there's a great danger to that, and I don't like making regulations like this, but seeing how much people were violating the rules that were put in place by the Lager Rodeo, I think it might be necessary to do something at this point for public safety purposes.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
Two things. I do want to say thank you to everyone who volunteers their time and puts this on, and I've been there as a judge and seen it, and I've been there as a participant throwing the candy. I personally do not think that this will make a difference for those people who don't already follow the rules. My concern is that if we vote this down, I still don't want to see it as a misdemeanor, but I don't think that we need to be involved in this.
Okay. Anyone else?
No, I don't, I don't see any reason to pass this, this rule. I, I go to every parade, and I haven't seen any kid run out under a float or a truck, and I don't think Sidewooly's had any accidents, as far as I know, in the last 60 years. So, I'm not ready to, I'm not ready to slap restrictions on kids and parents, and it's their responsibility, you know? It's not, not up to us to, to take care of kids, it's up to the parents, so, you know, I, I can't move there, no.
Okay. Councilwoman Allen, did you have a comment?
I, I need to apologize to Dottie and some of my friends back there. I, you know, I just think it is an unnecessary restriction. You can put no speeding and a traffic, you know, speed limit sign, and if somebody chooses to ignore it, they'll ignore it, whether the law is there and the sign is there. So, anyway, I, I just don't want to make things more onerous on people.
Well, I don't get to vote, but, and usually I don't make comments about this, but I do see this as a way of actually supporting those who actually volunteer their time and are putting themselves, because the liability that's involved with it at risk. I agree with Councilman McGoffin that this is a way that we could give them some teeth. It's not like it's a large infraction, it's $25, but still, it's making a statement that says we don't agree with what is happening, the throwing of candy and the possibility of putting somebody's life in danger, a child's life in danger. So, with that, I'm turning it over to the council. Are you wanting to make a motion? Yes, go ahead. Sure. Chief McElwath, could you make a comment? This, you got a request here from Councilman McGoffin to do that.
I would just like to hear your thoughts on this. I mean, you're kind of the, when it comes to the Fourth of July, this is, you know, it's your show, too, of keeping everyone safe.
Obviously, the throwing of candy does occur. A lot of times, if we see it, we're going to tell them to stop. I have not experienced anybody getting injured during the parade, but yes, it is, it can happen. It is a possibility. I am amenable to either option.
Do you think having a $25 infraction would, would reduce the number of people doing it, or would it have any impact at all?
Well, it would have impact where if we did see it and it did happen, that we, generally, every circumstance we deal with, we're probably going to start with a warning anyway, tell them to stop, see it again, then it's going to escalate into that portion. So, I don't know how much we'd use it, but that's pretty much how we do business in a lot of areas of policing. Use discretion.
Thank you.
All right. Yes.
So, a while back, earlier last year, we've passed a ordinance that if people had their fences tagged, we would, we would find them. That didn't deter the person doing the tagging, it actually hurts the home residents and punishes the person who was law-abiding. Now, this isn't the same case, but sometimes in the name of safety, when we give away our liberties, it's not wise. And at that time, there was a statement made that we need to do this in the name of safety to prevent the tagging. But what we did was we hurt people who were law-abiding, and so, it just seems like it's something where in the contract, I think people have that ability. I had an event at Riverfront Park, and kids ran up to get hot dogs, and they were at risk of burning their hands. That was my responsibility to make sure that they were as a barrier and people were there to make sure they didn't get burned. I wouldn't want an ordinance put in place to prevent kids from running up to it. I would take that responsibility on. So, I appreciate the contract, and a letter or support verbally would be great, but I just don't think it's a good use of municipal codes.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, is there a motion on the table?
Madam Mayor, I'll put a motion on the table.
I'll second.
What's that?
What's your motion?
Oh, my motion is to, well, it's to move this forward so I can vote no on it, and we can see it move on for this, for these guys.
Okay. All right. Is there a second? Okay. Second by Mr. McGoffin. All those in favor of amending Ordinance 2041-23 of Chapter 1244 of the Sidewooly Municipal Code signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Opposed, same sign?
No.
No.
Okay. So, the motion does not carry, and so, we will not be putting this into place for you. But I do want to thank you for bringing this forward and making us aware of our concern and our responsibility as citizens to, if nothing else, perhaps even watch out for other people's children, and just helping them to help keep their children safe. So, again, thank you for all you do. We greatly appreciate everything that you do. Thank you for coming in tonight. Okay, moving on to item number two of unfinished business, and that is, Mr. Coleman, it is you. uh, it is you. And this is an amendment to Title 17 of the Sejewelli Municipal Code to address alcohol production establishments, ordinance number 2044-23, and this is a second read. Thank you. [laughing]
Okay, so, um, this next ordinance is, uh, was something that was brought up originally by the, uh, well, we'll call it the Business Development Committee for, I can't remember, we've changed names, but, uh, the, the Business Development Committee was looking at ways to increase economic development opportunities in the city, and one of the things that we recognized in the Planning Department is if anybody ever wanted to have a brewery in town, they were limited to, uh, having, uh, it in the industrial zone. And there were, there were problems with allowing, um, the tasting room and restaurant part of that in the industrial zone. So, we started a deep dive on this, and I, I think I described a lot of this at the last meeting, so I'll, I'll do the really quick version. Um, how about I just get really quick and say, we discussed this at the last meeting, and [laughing] I, I think everybody remembers what I said. Um, nothing in this ordinance has changed since the last time we discussed it. The idea is really to, um, it was an economic development opportunity to bring breweries, tasting rooms, uh, possibly distilleries, uh, wine tasting rooms into the city. Uh, 'cause we don't have any, and they're, they're proven economic development drivers in other communities, and not saying that we're going to become Woodenville or anything like that, but it would be good to have maybe a brewery with a, with a restaurant in here somewhere. And so, Planning Commission worked hard to make sure that the regulations didn't allow too much production in commercial zones and didn't allow too much, um, like, res, uh, restaurant and, and retail in the industrial zone. And that's the long and short of it.
Looking, sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Looking at what you've done, I think it's fantastic ordinance. I look forward to seeing businesses come in and hopefully producing some fantastic beer. Um, I'm good with what I see here.
Anyone else? Okay, so, this is a second read. You have the option to move forward with it if you so choose. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead. Councilwoman Allen?
I'd like to, uh, move for the adoption of ordinance 2044-23.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
All right, thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond, uh, to approve ordinance 2044-23 to adopt amendment Title 17 of the Sejewelli Municipal Code to define alcohol production facilities and establish regulations for the use in the central business district, mixed commercial zone, and the industrial zone. Any more discussion or any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep. All right. Charlie, you are up. We're going to be talking about the funding for the North Star Project, Resolution 111923. This is a second read.
Thank you, yes. Back this evening with, uh, opportunity to talk about that resolution that involves the North Star Project. Uh, the fundamental policy question is the request from the North Star Project for our, uh, 40% of our House Bill 1590 funds, and have included a lot of the same information in the packet, but there were a couple of outstanding questions from the last conversation. One was how much overhead would the county be requiring from, uh, from the funds that we provided them, and the answer to that was, uh, zero. Uh, the county would be passing all those funds directly through their NOFA process. The second question was about how the breakdown would work for how you spend the funds. It's in House Bill 1590, but it, you have to dig for it. So, I could not do that during the meeting very easily, but I've got a chart that I put at the back of this item that breaks down what you could do with the 40%, what you can do with the 60%. Uh, so, we've provided that information to you as well. I think the 60% discussions, it could be a part of this, but it's really not a part of this resolution. This is really about the 40%. 60% is a separate conversation that we'd like to bring to you at another time, but you at least have all the information in terms of how the funds could be spent. So, I'd love to get direction from council this evening. Do you want to go forward with North Star and provide them the 40%? Do you want to do something on our own here in the city? Do you have something else in mind, or do you want to just hold and do nothing?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, what kind of accountability does North Star have, uh, in the use of our funds? Because these are taxpayers' funds, and we've seen, uh, as was published in the paper and reported on the last time we had First Step come in here, that they have a 0% success rate. And so, if we're putting money that's going towards projects that provide 0% success rates, um, that to me is hard to explain to taxpayers as far as what we're doing with their money. Are we helping people through programs? Are we enabling people, um, and not providing them opportunity for a hand up, um, but enabling with a handout? And so, that's my, that's my question and my concern, um, in a lot of this, uh, in the North Star Project in and of itself. Um, and so, so I just want to know what kind of accountability North Star has, uh, with the funds that, that if council opted to send them, what that would be.
Yeah, I can answer that. So, we're, we're putting it towards NOFA, which is actually their rental program. It's been around for a long, long time. Um, it's, I don't think you've ever read anything in the paper negative about the rental program that they have, and that's what this is going to go towards. And North Star is a conglomeration of both the county and the cities, and, um, we, and, uh, First Steps was not a part of North Star. So, that's been brought into...
Correct. It's, it's brought into North Star and an option to fund through, and I understand the purpose of it. I understand the state requirements and, of, of what is necessary, but I also looking out for the taxpayers' dollars, and also looking at our community and looking at the, the actual reality that providing places for people is, is necessary. In some senses, yes, but at the same point, there comes a point when you're enabling, right? Like, you, if you enable people and you subsidize their lifestyle so that they can make the choices that they're making, um, without any, any restrictions and accountability, you're, you're just enabling this problem, and then two years later, you're coming back and asking taxpayers for, for more money to clean up more of a problem that's been created. I just spent the weekend in Portland, and it's a disaster, and they've got project after project after project. Um, in fact, you can't even park there without having a $3, um, tax that goes into those projects. Um, and in, in, in talking to some of the community members and stuff that live there, um, and, you know, there, there are organizations that are incredibly helpful and detrimental to our community and giving people a hand up, um, providing them with opportunity, giving them resources, um, and education and, and opportuni, you know, just, just the opportunity. Um, but we have to be very careful about whether we're actually enabling the problem or whether we're, we're, you know, what, what we're really doing here. Um, and so, that's just where my concern comes with, with the whole thing and why I want to really make sure that where our tax dollar, where these tax dollars go is really going to help our community and that the taxpayers' dollars aren't being, um, being put into a project that's just going to create more of a problem requiring more taxes.
Just as a little bit of a follow-up, so, this resolution really would declare the council's intent, but the next step of the process would be for the council to consider an interlocal agreement. So, that's where some of the accountability would come, in terms of what's included in there. Um, but down to the level of personal accountability, that's going to be hard to, to drive all the way down to that level, uh, but the county certainly has a system for trying to make sure that the funds are spent effectively.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Lavaca?
And so, when we had North Star, um, come by, that was one of my big questions to them, because I think that's what it boils down to at a lot of communities, is they just simply provide the housing, and then the, the problem grows, so the metrics don't go away. So, I was, um, I was wondering, like, even, I know the 60% is on a different frame. How long will the 40% go? Is there like a four-year, an eight-year, a 10-year lookout? And then with the 60%, wo, would, um, is there a way to be more preventative and have more of a training program to up skills of people that maybe don't have skills and partner with the port to get a place at Northern, um, at the Swift Center or something? There's so many buildings there that are empty and do more training and not, for, for skills rather than housing. Because I don't, I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Diamond that housing does become an issue. The 40%, I think, in my personal opinion, um, trust them with it, see what they do with that, um, and, and they got metrics to move forward, and we can see. But what does it look like? Is it, like I said, a four-year, an eight-year, a 10-year? And then, are we just taking the other 60% and using that for housing locally and not having any kind of a step up, step out of the situation problem?
Well, it hasn't been determined yet how long. We've tossed out three years. Um, but...
So, Madam Mayor, so the vote right now is just to go forward with a single year, one year, that's it, and then look at this next year and see how the money's being sent, is, if the program's working with that 40%, and then also look at our 60%.
Right now, we're just asking for clarity from the council in terms of where you want to go from a policy perspective. So, really, this vote is just telling us, yeah, we'd like to look at an interlocal agreement and discuss that, and we think we might approve that. The interlocal agreement that, at least the draft I've seen, is a three-year in our local agreement, so it would be initially a three-year, uh, allocation of the 40%, and then at that point, you get reporting throughout that period, but at that point, then you'd have the opportunity to say, hey, that's working great, we want to keep doing that, or we want to do something else with the 40%. And then, second part of your question, the 40% is more flexible for operations. The 60% is very much bricks and mortar, uh, with very specific groups that need to be served, uh, by, by those funds.
Councilwoman Kestie?
I personally would like to see us write the check to an organization that would better benefit our taxpayers here in Sejewelli.
Councilwoman Burns?
Uh, I've looked over the North Star Project quite extensively, and I think it seems like a pretty sound program to start with. I, I definitely don't want to just give, uh, funds up indefinitely without checking in. I, I want to see accountability for this and know exactly where our money's going, and know that it is succeeding. Um, I would insist on that, which it seems like we are going to get that from them. Um, I think that it's well worth giving it a shot. Um, I would be curious to see the information for this First Step Center, because I have a hard time believing they hit a 0% success rate. You'd almost think they have to stumble on at least one person succeeding. Um, hmm, hope anyway. Um, but I think that this is worth trying. I, I do believe that, uh, allocating the 40% of funds that we have to it, uh, for a starting period, um, showing some good faith to the other cities, um, hoping that they will pool their resources with us and do something productive for the communities.
Councilman Allen?
Um, unlike myself, I, I think it's really a worthy project, and, uh, I would be willing, uh, number one, because we don't have to administer it, the county's doing that, and I think pooling our money will achieve a lot more than taking things on our own totally. So, anyway, that's...
Okay, thank you. And Councilman McGoffin?
Um, I just had a follow-up question, uh, pointed clarification. From a lot of our meetings and presentations, I was under the assumption that, you know, if it's a three-year agreement, like, the county would have, you know, the ability to disperse the funds, but then they would be getting a, like, an annual report back, right? And then they, if that annual report shows 0% success, they can say, okay, next year, we're not going to give any money. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we haven't, it hasn't been locked down yet. We're still in discussion regarding that, but that is what we have presented, or I've presented to North Star, so. And the other mayors are still, they're like us with their council. They're still in discussion regarding it. Um, but I agree with that. I think that there should be an out, especially if we feel like that it's not going, um, it's not benefiting the public as a whole, which is what this money is for, is to benefit those who really need it. So, yeah.
So, I, you have my support for that 40%, and, um, you know, the majority of the 60% is still ones that we get to be the ones to, to issue directly from the city, from my understanding.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, um, so this is a second read, so you have the option to move forward with it, and actually, it's, um, just approval of the attached Resolution 111923, uh, funding the North Star Project by stating our intent. It's our intention to allocate 1590 funds to the partnership. Did you want to make a motion on that or not?
Uh, Madam Mayor, if the council wants to go along, I will make that motion, uh, for Resolution 1119-23, and if we don't choose, choose to vote tonight, that would be fine.
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So, we have a motion by Councilman Allen, seconded by Councilman Lavaca. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, same sign? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, two opposed, and that is Councilwomen Diamond and Kestie. So, motion carries. Five to two. All right, thank you, and we will bring, bring it forward then when we have a contract with them to look at. So, all right. Thank you, Charlie. Moving on to the next item, and you're right here. So, under, it's a memorandum of understanding between North Sound Region Participating Local Governments and North Sound Behavior Health Administrative Services Organization. And, Charlie, you want to, this is about the opioid settlement. You want to take this?
Thank you, yes. Thank you, Mayor Johnson. And council, this item is related to our opioid settlements. We've now signed, uh, multiple opioid settlements and likely have more coming our way. Uh, the settlements are all based upon a framework for oversight of the, how the money is spent, and it's, it's really, as I understand it, and it's still being formed up, but this is going to be more of a, a body that simply looks and makes sure the funds are being spent appropriately. The MOUs in the back, and those are dense documents, but in the back, it actually specifies in one section all the ways that the money can be spent for, um, for opioid treatment essentially and various other services related to opioid addiction. Uh, so, this OAC is something that we, as a, as an entity that's signed on to these settlements, actually need to support and help create, and that's what this action item is this evening. Um, so, it's pretty, pretty administrative, but nonetheless, and very wordy. My apologies for that. A lot of legal documents flying around. Uh, we did our best to summarize it.
Okay, is there any discussion regarding this or questions? Would the council like to move? Are you recommending that we make a motion on this tonight, or what's your thoughts on that?
If this, if the council does not have any questions, I'll move this one on.
So, is there someone who would like to put this motion forward?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Um, I'll second that.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman McGoffin, uh, to enter into an MOU required by its previous commitments made in accepting the opioid set, settlement funding. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? All right, thank you. Motion carries. That's easy enough. All right, so, last item of the night is New Business Community Development Grant Program, Resolution 111723, first read, and this is whether City Sejewelli should use 140,000 of ARPA funds to establish Community Development Grant Program. Charlie?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Once again, council, uh, this item, uh, as we've talked about a bit recently, we talked about it at the work session last week, uh, at the end, and, uh, it's come out of the, originally the Business Development Committee, now the Planning and Business Development Committee, uh, had some work put into it. There were a lot of council comments last week, and, um, I'm looking for direction at this point. So, you know, this thing's been brought forward. Uh, it's pretty, it's scoped in detail, but we need, I need help from the council in terms of where you want to go with it, how you want to approach it. Um, and it may be that we need another workshop or something, I don't know, but anything you can do to provide direction this evening would be helpful. This is really put out there at this point as a discussion piece.
Okay. Are there any questions? Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
I just have a, a comment. One of, this came up in the Business Committee meeting, and one of the things that was mentioned was the five grand might not be enough to actually fund a lot of the projects we were hoping for. Um, some of the business owners were saying, like, a 10 grand would get you a lot closer to achieving, you know, getting a new awning or, you know, sprucing up a building, or, um, I just wanted to make sure the council heard that too, that that was the feedback we got from some of the businesses that were interested in this program, is that five grand might not be enough as a cap.
Can I get some feedback on that, I guess, as we go, just so we can, yeah, maybe narrow it down?
That's, I, I like where that's going, and also that I wanted to say that I didn't want the matching funds, um, because it said matching funds, um, I don't think... I don't think it should increase their grant scoring because they might not be able to match that, but they still should be able to try. And some of the other things could be not only just the external focusing on that, but internal. Maybe they need a new boost because theirs are all torn up and they can't get them. Things that are going to make their business better and more marketable for people to come in and spend money. So, just some more ideas.
Can I get some feedback on that as well? I'm just going to keep asking if you have online a way to get direction.
I was thinking that for businesses, we can cap at 10,000 and do up to eight of those. And for private, or up to 10 of those, and for private, 5,000 and do up to 10 of those. And I know there's an overlap, but see which one fills up first. And then I do, I do like the idea of having it with the appearance of the buildings up front, so that way you're seeing it when the community comes in or when patrons come in. I understand that people might need some help in the shop, but I would think that one would be more limited because we want to beautify the community, and that's the idea with the grant, although it is for COVID relief for businesses. So if they need boosts and stuff, but in a business, you kind of make do. If you're scratching by and you can't even put any skin in the game, you might not be in business for very long. So if you can't, you know, I've made do with thrift shops or Habitat for Humanity to start off as you build business. But if you can beautify the outside and draw people inside, you can do some interior design that's pretty creative.
Anyone else? Yes?
I'm good with the increase to 10,000 for businesses and keeping the cap at five for everyone else. Is that what you were suggesting? I'm good with doing that. And I personally prefer to keep it outward-facing and not do for interior of the businesses. That's my thought.
I am in favor of the $10,000 limit for business. That's great with me. I don't believe there should be a match. I think that would put some people out of the running. And I think that everybody deserves a fair shot. I actually have, I'm not opposed to them using that money for internal purposes if that's what's necessary to help bring people in. They may have a beautiful building outside, but may have some projects that they need to work on inside. Maybe they need to take a wall out or do something that is, that would allow them to bring more people in or to adjust their business structure. We're not in their business. We don't know what they necessarily need. But I do believe that there needs to be accountability for it. So whether they bring receipts back to us and we bring, they're reimbursed then with proof of what they've done to better the business itself. I want to see what the accountability is as far as how those funds are actually handled. Because you can say you're going to do things all day long, and we're providing the grant money, but how do we know that it's being used properly? So I think that there needs to be allocations and parameters set in regards to that for accountability.
Okay. McLaughlin, yes?
That was really well said. I just want to add on to that, too, that some of the businesses, they don't own the building, and that was one of the complaints that we heard last night, too, was we've been trying to get this, you know, thing painted for 20 years, and he won't do it. So maybe they have something inside that, you know, they could spend five or 10 grand on to beautify the inside when the landowner or the building owner doesn't want to beautify the outside. So I would support doing internal and external. But I also really like that accountability, that if we give someone 10 grand, I want to make sure that it goes to that.
I could just speak to the accountability real quick. We'll have a contract with anybody who receives a grant, and it will, it's something we need to draw up still. It's going to be a little complex. We've got ones that have been done for businesses. We've got ones that have been done for beautification programs. We have to put them together into something that's flexible. So that's going to take a little bit of work, but we will have a contract with them. And we're fortunate to have Kelly on staff as a former auditor as well because this is the kind of stuff auditors definitely look at. And we want to make sure that we are protecting the city's resources and getting what people promised they would provide us. We've talked about it being largely a reimbursement grant. Unless the council wants to do something that would not be a reimbursement grant, it's a lot less risky for the city, certainly, to have people spend the funds and we can reimburse them quickly. But rather than have us just give them money, there is definitely a risk in that, that, especially if it's $10,000, that...
And we do do that with the lodging tax as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. They give us a receipt after they've spent the money, and then we reimburse them. Yep. So it's a protocol that we have here at the city.
Madam Mayor, if I may, would $5,000 for interior projects for businesses, 10,000 for external projects, since that seems to be where the big coin is? Somebody can go in there and fix up drywall or do some plumbing that's not so cosmetic. Increase air conditioning might make it pleasant to be in the shop, but for patrons, it's not. For city people going in and out, that's really, or not city, but just residents and tourists and patrons. We want them to have a beautified city. So the idea is really kind of, I believe, to beautify the city. But regardless, I don't think we should vote on this until after that Peter thing, so we see exactly what we're even looking like with these projects and see what these people, what ideas are there. And then see what kind of parameters. Maybe it is 10,000 for the business interior and external, and then that much. But I just see with all the businesses we have, it's not a lot of businesses. And if all of them want to build inside their shops, we're going to walk right downtown and not see any change until we go into their shops.
Great. Anything else from anyone? Yes, Councilman Allen?
At this point, I don't want to vote on it. I'm actually pretty skeptical about the whole program. And I rented my building, but if I wanted a new awning, I paid for it. If I wanted to do interior repairs or improvements, I did it. So I'm kind of a, you know, it seems like we're just throwing money, you know? I mean, I could see something more if, for new murals or something like that. Anyway, I just think this is throwing money to people that, in many cases, are flushing their money down the toilet that won't be a survivor probably in two or three years. And that's my own mean-spirited, but it's the truth.
So it is a first read, so there doesn't have to be a vote on it tonight. We can actually bring it back on the 22nd. So, anything else? Yes, Councilman Owen?
I kind of, I kind of agree with Glenn, you know? This thing has been going on for years, and you're not going to accomplish anything. Those landlords are there for rent money. They don't really care. If you can persuade them to do, but if they do, then they're going to pass the cost on to their tenants, and some of them are barely hanging on. So it's kind of like taking a leak in the wind. It don't accomplish anything. It comes right back in your face. So if you can, that's why, Charlie, I backed out of that committee, you know, because it just kind of, it just kind of turned me off because I know what's going to happen. You're not going to accomplish a whole lot because these landlords, they don't care. Some people, they two or three do, and they keep their place up pretty nice. I don't have a magic wand to persuade these people, but some of them, they don't even live in Sejewelli, you know? They live in Anacortes or wherever, Seattle. And they're not interested in looks. They just, it's all about money. And I don't want to see these tenants have their rent raised just to satisfy you and I. But it would be nice if landlords would take interest and make their buildings look nice. But I agree with Councilman Allen. I don't think it's going to go anywhere. $5,000 ain't nothing. $10,000 sweetens a pot a little bit. $20,000 might get your attention, I don't know. But I don't have the answer, Charlie. I wish, I wish luck. If it happens, I've got to buy somebody a $100 steak dinner, I believe, sitting right down there. And I'll do it. But, good luck.
Okay, so anything else from the council? They want to wait?
Yeah, just a quick comment on that. I think you mentioned the 22nd. Bring it back. I can definitely not be here on the 22nd.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, you cannot be. So, but we would be, well, there was a suggestion by Councilman Lavaca that actually no motion be taken until after the event on the 19th. And I didn't get any feedback from the council if that was something that they wanted to do or not. But, yes, on the 19th, the...
Oh, so going back to prior council meetings, my strategic, the strategic planning meetings, I thought we had all kind of had a general consensus that we didn't want to have city funds used for motivational speakers to come in and talk to us, that we liked the roundtable stuff sitting in here. So I personally don't like the whole concept. I don't believe it's good use of money or time. But it looks like it was already set up.
I'm not sure about this one, but I think this is different than the strategic planning. I believe I've mentioned that earlier in this meeting, but my hope is like what you're saying, Councilwoman Diamond, is to have a roundtable for strategic planning. I haven't seen that enter onto the calendar yet, but last year we did that kind of team-building thing. But I think that that would be where we do this. This is separate, this is, I think, the business committee, the committee you were on.
It's for the love of the city. It's actually where we have the public coming in.
Yeah. Didn't you, I mean, you were on that committee. It was you, Joe?
I had nothing to do with that. I would not have voted for that.
Oh, it was put forth by the business, I don't know. I read through the notes on that one when we had the workshop, and that's where I had some concerns, like, where did it come? But I think that you, Glenn, Ellen, and Councilman Burns had that. So I think that's totally different than a strategic planning or a roundtable-type deal. I think that's...
Yeah, right. They're separate, okay. Yeah. This is a public event. Okay. So what do you want to do, council? Do you want to wait till after the 19th? Is that what you want to do? I see your head shaking. Okay, so it looks like that's what we want to do. We want to wait till after April 19th for Love of the City event.
Sounds good. And just to close the loop with council, I will at least do my best to make some revisions to this, so when we do bring it back to you, it'll at least reflect the conversation from this evening.
All right. Thank you so much, Charlie. Okay, and that actually sums up our meeting. We are done. It is late. It is 8:22. Thank you, council, for hanging in there and for the great conversations that we have had, great discussions. Next meeting is the March 22nd at 6:00 PM. We are adjourned.